Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the committee meeting of Venues, Markets and Comms. We have a band of brothers, we few, with four of us here, which is a bit of a shame. Item 441, declarations of any disposable peculiary interests.
Precautionary one, it is on my interest, you're talking about the newsletter later. And the council did use about Vetford Magazine to deliver the newsletter this time.
Thanks very much.
Well, I was involved, but it is my business.
Anybody else? Item 442, apologies for our I think we've got Vic Peters, Mike Brindle. I'm not sure, does
We can put Chris Brooks down because he's
And we're going to get the next one as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Item 443, resignation of committee member. To note the resignation of councillor Christopher Brooks from the Venues and Markets Committee. I'm a bit disappointed by this, to be honest. But it's always disappointing when anybody resigns. Don't know if anybody, anybody else wants to say anything on that?
No, no reason.
Wash your hand.
I'm sorry, there's no reason.
I haven't heard one.
No, not where.
The only thing I was going to add was, with all of the committees, we aimed for eight members to, you know, is that a sort of fair number? And to make sure there was enough people, so it was quora and there was a good debate. And when there was a change with amenities and finance, Doug and Stuart Terry swapped, so to keep the number at eight. So I think we should, as a committee, send a message out to, you know, other councillors to say there is a vacancy, if somebody wants to join the committee to take us back up to eight, I think that would be, you know, I think some people might have been put off if they saw there was already eight originally. So if there is now a vacancy and somebody wants to join, I don't know if there is, I'm just saying. But we should open it up to people if they want to come on.
I think that's entirely reasonable.
You should ask the other councillors if anybody is interested in joining us.
Yeah. I think I yeah, no, I won't comment anything on that, I don't think. If anybody else has any comments, Chris.
I have a different one, which I wasn't going to, but it seems to me that in order to be a proper council, that could take committee meetings. But you're wrong, at any committee meetings that you can do, because you're not getting all the work, you're just to go to full council and all read the minutes, doesn't really
Well, I think, yeah, I think we're in an unusual situation because this particular person claimed in full council that he actually wasn't a councillor and was a journalist despite the fact that he does and or has in the past voted in committees and on full council.
But that's just my first opinion, I think, if you want.
I think that's reasonable.
Sure, can I just ask? Was there, well, after making that comment, did he actually define whether he was going to stay in his councillor role or if he was going to focus on his journalistic role? Because at times, you know, like in all, in all meetings and everything, there will always be discourseful interests and why not? And if a conflict of interest comes along between his role as a journalist, as a media person and his pastoral duties, is there any conversation with the councillor himself about where does he stand on this and what exclusions, if any, he needs to do to make to continue his councillor role? Or he just sort of resigns from the committees because of it? No?
I've certainly had no communication from him, and the first I heard about this was when I was, when David and I were chatting about the papers.
Last week.
Last week, yeah.
So we, not only for this committee, but the purpose for the full council as it stands when we have committees, we still don't know if he's going to continue with his councillor duties? Or resign from the other committees as well?
As far as I know, the resignation was only for this committee, it wasn't as a councillor. And the fact that it is a resignation, so it's been instigated by the councillor himself. To take Terry's point, I think internally, we can, we can email the rest of the councillors to ask whether there's anybody else that wants to join tomorrow. We haven't got to wait for another approval at full council or anything. He's made that decision.
So I don't think there's a vote, whether we accept it, it's done, isn't it? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. 444, minutes, confirm the minutes of the Venues and Markets Committee meeting held on the 20th of September 2023, received by full council on the 26th of September 2023, to be confirmed as a true record and signed as well, chairman, et cetera. Any comments? I have none, so we'll that as, I've signed the papers, so my that's agreed. 445, review of the venues and markets terms of reference.
So, yeah, I think Karen circulated the current terms of reference with the documentation, so it's passed over to councillors to whether they've got any points or amendments.
And just two points. Firstly, I think we're all a bit guilty of this. And the official committee name is Venues and Markets, and then the text refers to Venues and Communications. And I think we sort of use venues fairly consistently and then depending, you know, which one of us is speaking, markets and communications sort of alternates, I think, on the day of the week. I mean, I think actually we should call it Venues, Markets and Communication Committee because they're the three things that
That is what it is.
Yes, but
No, no, I know.
You know, when all of us are talking, it's Venues and Communications, and another day it's Venues and Markets. And I think we need to say all three things because that's the three roles of the committee and just agree to that. I think officially it is Venues and Markets on the committee structure.
On the agenda.
I missed off Communication, even though that is within us, so we just need to tidy that up to consistency purposes. And the second point was around where it lists the town council owned venues. What's the distinction of Nottingham and St Peters? Because I'm always a bit unclear.
The only, the only, the reason that's not added to this is currently, as a committee, we are responsible for the operational management of active venues and St Peters is almost mothballed for activity. Having said that, we are talking about doing micro projects and things like that, so it's another anomaly, to be honest, so we can change that if that's what you want.
I think it's one of those grey areas where it sort of sits between two committees, but actually, if we're going to do anything inside, it definitely so I just, you know, it's sort of splitting hairs a little bit, but it is a town council owned venue and should be featured in what we talk about.
Sorry, Carla.
So I was just going to ask, do we have any timeline for when those micro projects may start in St Peters?
So they're going to start probably probably two or three months into 2024, they just have the complete consultation and then they'll initiate some of the micro projects going forward, so it's probably going to be around March.
I'm just wanting to quickly clarify and check on one thing, which is about the scope is to this, it's the six, to the health and safety responsibilities for committee, the Carnegie, Guildhall and Marketplace. Has that always been the case for this committee?
No, but as you'll see in the budget, we are sort of now, it used to be it used to be Finance that held all of those operational budget, if you like. But now they're being devolved back down to committees and you'll see in the budget, that's why we're, we're, we're up against what we originally budgeted because we're now doing it for the safety. So I think really going forward, we will have that as our Yeah.
I think it's going to come to bear particularly when we speak about other stuff later on today.
That's only why I was sort of
I've got a feeling that if you want to change the name of the committee, it will have to go for the full council.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're all happy to do that.
I just suggest, I happen to know there's an agenda item on Finance next week for a review of the committees. So it might be that we mop up a few things at the same time rather than lots of different changes.
Makes a lot of sense.
I'd forgotten that apparently we said that there would be a six month review of the committee structure and Alan reminded me, that's why it's on the agenda next week.
So we're all happy to move on, as stated. 446, communications report. And so to you, David, I think this is going to be quite lengthy.
Well, to be honest, I hope you're not with us tonight, although you circulated her report already. So just to cherry pick some of the, some of the points within her report, I mean, it's good to see that, you know, we'll talk a little bit more about it in, in a future agenda item in this meeting, but we've actually set up a new social media site, Facebook site, which is Stepford Market and the new market coordinator is now busy populating that with content each market day, so that's starting to, to slowly grow. In terms of the reach of our other Facebook sites, in terms of Town, Town Council, we have a reach averaging over 25,000 with an engagement of 41.5%, which is brilliant. In terms of Carnegie and Guildhall, that's a little bit more specific and our reach is 16,000 plus with an engagement rate of 17%. So again, still good, can be better. Both of those, Hazel, our communications officer's got a target by hopefully the end of the year, so it's only a few weeks away that she's going to try and push that up to 3,000 followers on each, each social media channel. In terms of her targets for press releases, she is on target versus the media policy that we've adopted. Today she got out another press release in terms of a review of the Remembrance Sunday Parade. So, but what we have talked about internally is we want to be proactive. So rather than just wait for committees to have their official press releases in through community engagement, internally, we're going to set up regular review meetings with other officers, the civic officer, the town team officer, et cetera, to try and proactively generate more positive stories going forward, so hopefully that will meet with the committee's approval. Social media posts, I think, leading up to this committee, I think there's 16 of them going, so we really want to get a lot more than that, even though our media policy states that we're well above our target. Targets are one thing we want to perform a lot higher than that. And actually, I think some of the stuff that, I came to amenities last week and in amenities, they were talking about how we really want to push the positive work of the town team around the town with some of their cleanup operations, et cetera. So hopefully going forward, you'll see an even greater presence with our communications. Is there any other questions coming from that? It's nice to see she's still engaging with Nathan, the communications officer at Breckland, we've got a nice little insert at Your Breckland magazine in terms of our Christmas site switch on. There's always a bit of competition between towns.
Another question for us, I was just going to say, I'm really positive to see the, it's not worth waiting for bits and, but a lot of people at the other time, the Vetford is better going out, I'm really pleased to see that. Yeah, it's really positive to see that we're getting a instant aggression magazine, this can go key is those sort of connections where we bring other people into the area they love to do with by the season where they came from other, because I'm just saying, that's one of the positive developments.
And one of the other things Hazel's been doing is liaising with other, other groups. For instance, a really creative group in the town is U3A. And they also try and promote their, their activities and monthly talks that are held at the Carnegie in local villages outside the town and, and their committee has a really good relationship with us. And they take our flyers and posters to the little post offices and the corner shops in, in some of the villages and surrounding towns. So again, we, you know, we're trying to maximize every avenue to get our message out and it's good. I'll talk about the newsletter in the next agenda.
Sorry. Yeah, generally, really pleased to see the report and the focus on offline communication. But David will know I'm like a broken record, but in the past, it was almost like a digital report. And there's a huge section now on offline and it's actually at the front of the report and I think that's really encouraging that, you know, we're having a complete mix of methods to communicate. And like Doug, the fact that we're in the Breckland magazine, I think is really important, assuming we don't pay. And the number of copies that, it must be about 30,000, maybe as many as 40,000 every house in Breckland. You know, that's, we want to be bringing people into Vetford, so that sort of coverage is really important. I do know because I went to a meeting at County on Monday that they are bringing back the twice a year Your Norfolk. Which is why I'm quite pleased we went with our town and not your town, because it would have been Your Breckland, Your Norfolk. But it'd be good if we could get in there as well. I'm not sure what story we want to go with, but, you know, that's every house in Norfolk. I think we've had a hundred percent success rate with the press releases that have been submitted, which is practically unheard of. You know, everyone that's been issued has been covered, which is, you know, really positive. So the more we do, the better. I wondered if you could either on the Facebook page or the website have a little bit of a sort of collage or sort of just somewhere to store those printed press articles because they're really positive. And we want to sort of highlight that, you know, the town council is picking up
In the media this week or in the media this month. I think that double bit. Makes sense.
Yeah, no, generally really positive and just really pleased to see the progress.
The other thing I will mention is internal communications, because it's still communications. Each Friday councillors will receive a bullet pointed email of all the sort of high line stuff that we've done as a council, as a group of officers during, during that particular week. And then after the weekend, and we've, we've chosen Monday because a lot of our event activity does take place on the weekend. You will get a more fuller version of specifically venues and markets activity. So I've seen, I've seen a quick draft this morning about what will go out this Monday, which again, you know, needs to keep you guys up to, up to speed with what's happening and why we're doing things, so hopefully that will be of an interest and, and informative for you. So internally, we're improving it as well. I have actually, as Hazel's bar manager, taken a lot of the sort of peripheral duties away from her because I know this is such an important aspect, so she's got time now to be fair to her, to actually get out and generate those things. I know she's been in touch with the Berry Tree Press and they're trying, and we're trying to resurrect the, the face to face meeting with, with the reporter because that's always a better way of doing things. So actually, they can be proactive with us as well by, by saying that they will circulate press releases for certain things, so that's good.
Excellent. I've a couple of comments on the back of that. One is to to sort of publicly and officially acknowledge what a great job Stacey's doing as market coordinator at the moment. She's taken on the role, which, which we all said before we appointed her, was a difficult role. She's taken it on and and really run with it and used her personality to best effect, I think it's fair to say. I'm very pleased with that. Not, not a criticism, but a little sort of push for the future. Most of our online content is via Meta or Facebook, whichever you prefer. I would like in time, and this is, this is not right now, and I've spoken to you about this before, I'd like in time to have a, a presence on X slash Twitter.
Yeah.
Before it goes down the path.
Yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll have a chat about that in due course.
Weekly markets are another agenda item for the chair, selling my thunder a bit there, but yeah.
I'm sorry, I just saw Stacey's picture and went with it.
Yeah, I went for it.
Yeah. Are we all done with the Comms report? So move on to, well, new 447 newsletter, which we've sort of covered already a bit.
Yeah, so the first issue was, was produced, agreed and delivered. First one was always a big learning curve for us. Unlike others around the committee table, we are not particularly experienced in producing magazine style newsletters. We've not really done it within my tenure of being with the council, so it was a bit of a learning curve, but we got there in the end with, with help of, of Terry and Terry, to be fair. And I think what we, we are going to do going forward for the next issue is one of the lessons learned is that we need to be more we need a timeline, which is a lot more detailed in the run up to the production. So and it also states in the media policy, to be honest, that we should bring our sort of content draft to committee to say, look, these are the kind of things that we want to cover. Are you all in agreement? And then we go away and actually develop that content into the, into the newsletter. So we need to really start it sort of mid-January. So when we come back, our first meeting in January, hopefully we'll have a rough idea of, of what kind of things that we want to cover in our, in our summer, autumn. To be honest, I've not heard any negative feedback, which is a bit amazing for things that councils do. To be honest, everybody has said it was, it was good and I'm looking at it thinking and it can be better. And actually, it will be better because we'll have a lot more content to talk about, bearing in mind summer and autumn, we're going to have a whole summer programme of events that we can talk about. The hanging baskets are going to come up, so there's going to be nice colourful content going into it. So if they like this one, wait for issue two. But in, in in sort of, in, in review of this, I think I'm reasonably pleased with the way it went. We were a little bit delayed, but our, because the issue one carried the Remembrance as one of our big feature stories, the angst was all around, can we get it delivered before, before that weekend? And we did. So I thank everybody else who was involved that helped us through that. So that's good. Any other questions on that one?
Very. I'm very pleased with the first edition. I thought it actually looked, you know, really quite professional. I think it's really important, we want to set the standard. I'm not sure what paper quality you went for, but actually I thought it was spot on. It didn't feel like a glossy magazine. It felt, you know, more papery, I suppose. Unscientific word, but it felt right for, for what it was. I was really pleased about that. I think the second edition, actually, the, the challenge will be to fit everything in.
Yeah.
Because, you know, this edition, we tended to copy and paste whole press releases. By the time we get to the next edition, there'll be a bank of stuff to use.
Massive.
And it'll be smaller articles, I suspect, because there's a bit more going on and you guys will start thinking, oh, I'll put that to one side for the next year, is that, so it's going to be a lot easier.
Is there a potential for doubling the pages?
There is, but there's a cost to it.
Of course.
And the cost, the cost, in some respects, some of the cost is not, not really too much. But we, what we can do is, is we can try and get a quote for, say, a 12 page instead of an eight page. Or we may go, I think, I think this kind of winter, spring, I think is always probably going to be an eight pager. So maybe we do an eight and a 12, you know, we'll have a look, we'll, we'll, we'll cost it up and bring it back to the cost in January and see whether we need to change it.
To get the economies of stone, you have to work in eight pages at times.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
But we could
10 or 12 would be quite expensive.
We could fill a double edition, but we'll get the cost and we'll come back.
I mean, obviously worth it to look at, but I would hope we'd have smaller articles and perhaps QR codes linking to the newly launched website.
Mid-January is going to be a time, isn't it?
It's going to be a time, but I think we do need to start it then because the biggest challenge for us, and I'll be honest with you, Terry helped us out massively and it's like, thank Terry for that and, and the team. It's all about layout. The experience comes with layout. And even though the, the guys that we used are very experienced, absolutely superb to work with, actually said to him, you've got a patience of the same dealing with people like me. But I think, I think we've got one addition down, but it's going to be a challenge to try and lay that up in a way that it could be interesting and readable, really. Because I think we're going to have a lot of content.
Good. Well, that's
Yeah.
That's better than the reverse, I think. The only negative review I've heard of it was we were doing a nitpick on Sunday, Terry and myself and a couple of others, and we saw a copy lying on the floor. But I think Doug made a very valid point about that, didn't you?
Yeah, Doug just pointing out, if they'd sent it to their home, they must have taken it out. So they've taken it out, they'll be reading it, so.
Terry was upset for the rest of the day.
My heart dropped, my heart sunk. Thank you. Any more questions on that? I don't think so. 448, Vetford Town Council website.
Yep, so we had a meeting on Tuesday, yesterday, to try and get an update of where we are. The deadline is that we will, again, come back to committee mid-January, just to give you a final look at what we've developed, to give us another week or so, just to make those slight tweaks. So again, Terry and Terry have had their input into tweaking the, the, the framework look, so the hands, et cetera. I think, yeah, we're, we're pretty much there in terms of what we need to do and work to now. There's always going to be work in progress. We're always going to populate it even further, especially around heritage stuff. There's so much to do, but I think what we've done is we've got the three eras that we talk, 13 eras that we talk about our heritage, we've got that on. So if someone was going to look at the website in end of January, there would be sufficient information on the site to, to, to be proud of. But we can tweak that going forward. I think our job now is to populate the other areas and make sure, but I think I mean, over to you two as well, but I think the format is a lot cleaner and easily to navigate than certainly the last one because it was a disaster. There was far too much going on. So I think we've, we've, we've put that bit to bed.
I agree. Doug?
There's only come to have too many chefs for the ground, but we know we're going to be involved, but is there a chance we can get a, a look at an early design?
What we can do, I suppose, is we can, well, actually, what we did say, no, I'll tell you what we did say, sorry, I misinformed you there, before Christmas. So that would please you, but you've got Christmas festivities. And we were talking with the link that could take you in to the work in progress.
Yeah.
And then coming back in the new year, if you've got any tweaks, you know, speak up because that middle part of January will be, we really must be pretty much comfortable to go live now.
A soft launch for councillors over Christmas.
Yeah. So, so by the time we come back to this committee in mid-June, I think we should be saying, yeah, we're pretty much pleased. If there's one or two tweaks, we've still got time. But we're going to provide, Hazel's going to provide you with the links that we can go in to develop it. So you can look at it and say, yeah, I can navigate this, this is fine. I think that's what we need to do. Show your family, can they do it? Is it, you know, what do they think? Because that's the key. For us, we know what we're looking for, we know what it means. We need just other people to see, you know, the website and say, actually, you know, Joe Public can, can navigate it perfectly easily as well.
Can I ask one other thing, just on the, are we doing accessibility checking before?
There will, and, and we have to do that anyway because that's statutory, so.
Cool.
Anybody else? If not, I'll just comment that we, we had a good look at, Terry and I had a good look at it on, it was only yesterday.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Oh dear, it seems so long ago. We, we had a good look. I was very encouraged at the amount and quality of the content. As David said, I was also encouraged by the cleanliness of lines and the lack of clutter on it. Looks great, you know, from an aesthetic point of view. I think it looks much better than the existing one. much better than the existing one.
Yeah, well, that was very useful, because there were a couple of comments straight away, especially when you look at the homepage. There's a lovely image on it, I think it's a nice image, but actually Terry's point was, is that, is it the static page? No, you scroll down. Well, I don't know that, because I only, so it was, it's really useful that you guys do look at it. Even if you just quickly scroll through it and say, yeah, it looked.
Just a couple of thoughts from, from yesterday. And, I mean, I'm actually quite looking forward to everybody else, uh, having the chance to see it, because it's actually, even in its current form, it's, it's really good. And the idea is that over Christmas, people have a bit more time, just sit there and fiddle on it. I don't need dead pages, I don't need dead links, that sort of thing. Gaps or incorrect information, you know, just a bit of a soft launch. We have the newsletter now. I think it'd be a good idea if we had a section to upload the newsletter, so you could look through past copies.
Yeah.
And just something I thought about. And I can't remember where it was, I think it's in the media policy. We said about a section for staff, so we're going to have the councillor section. And I couldn't remember in that drop down tab, if there was a staff section, we've contacted fans and that sort of thing.
There wasn't, but we did mention that.
Yeah, and we know where it's going to be, I think, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, that's all good. Okay. Four, four, nine, uh, weekly markets. And as you say, I've stolen your thunder, haven't I?
So, uh, the new market coordinator joined on the 14th of October, so she's, uh, barely been with us a month, or just a month, actually, I've counted the month. And, um, I must admit, even though, um, she performed well in the interview, uh, obviously because we offered her the job. I did, if I was absolutely brutally honest, I did have a little bit of reservations, because, uh, the physicality of the job. I had no doubt that personality wise, enthusiasm wise, um, and I think she will improve in her social media skills. But it was just the physicality of the market. I spent the first two weeks with her, um, taking her through what we need to do. And to be honest, I didn't really need to go the second week, because, um, I was just a, um, a passenger, really. You know, she's a little pocket rocket and actually the market traders love her, she's got a great personality. And I think, you know, as, as long as she's happy with being with us, I think we'll certainly be happy with the recruitment. So I'm really pleased and I know Terry is as well. Terry's comes up to the market, uh, every week and, uh, well, he's already, he's already said that. So I think we're, we're, we've, we've done well there in terms of attracting Stacey, I think she'll, she'll do well. What we need to do is she's worked, she's coming into the office after the market on Tuesdays and, and spending, um, a lot of the time with Hazel. And I think together they can then sort of, uh, develop, uh, stories around the market. And what I've said to Stacey is, you know, as you improve your, your performance on your, your, your videos and things, just take time to, to talk to the traders and make sure they're nice and comfortable. Talk about what you might be filming them with, rather than just go gun pose. And I think we'll, we'll have quite a suite of professional videos that we can, we can upload in the future. And I think that's all good, good stuff. In terms of, um, trying to attract more traders, um, there have been, uh, a few new traders, uh, arrived. One of the things that we've asked her to do is to really try hard to attract a food vendor. To this date, we haven't got anyone that's taken up the offer on a permanent basis. But there is someone that's coming on the 19th of December, um, almost to sort of test the waters, if you like. And we're really hoping that, um, it's on the 19th, so should, there should be leading up to Christmas some decent footfall. We're really hoping that, um, that they, they like the market, because, uh, from what we've seen, it's a really different quirky food vendor, it's not your run of the mill fare. So I think it'll be, it'll be a real improvement to the market. Yeah, so all good.
And again, just because I've seen sight of the finance and personnel agenda for next week. Uh, I'm really keen, I mean, Stacey actually has a nice, uh, smart looking jacket. I really want to get some of our external team in town council, Bradley, Julie. I've seen her on the market several times and I know who she is, but Joe Public would know that she was the market coordinator. So I think we need to, need to address that.
Okay, she, uh, I mean, she's got that big vibrant jacket and things like that, but there is no identification on it, I know. And that, I think, well, some of the, you know, some of the, um, venues, uh, Polos now has actually got the embroidered branding on it, but we moved away from it in recent years. And I think that has been spoken about and going back to.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I must admit, I was surprised that she, you know, she'd take so to her little illuminated jacket, but she loves it. I don't think you'll have any, uh, any class from Stacey.
Good.
And we can get, we can get that, um, put on that jacket. Yeah, any additional respect.
I, I, I think that's a good thing to, to do. Yeah.
Praise to all our staff. I was just noticing, because I watch her little videos, I think, well, I know you are, but you need to have anything on you that says Thetford Town Council.
And on that, uh, point, am I right in thinking we're also getting lanyards?
Yes, that's, that's the intention about next week as well. And a similar point for councillors, you know, you know, we go to functions and nobody knows who we are.
So we, because we get the Breckland, um, and it's not just to open the doors, is it? It's a, it's a bigger thing about who you are, isn't it?
No, no, I mean, you know, lanyards are good in some, in some environments and not in others. I mean, if you're working behind the bar, you don't want something frosted.
Absolutely.
But actually, I would also say that, you know, it's not a huge cost, but there's time for a lanyard and there's time for a sort of a nice badge. If you guys are coming to the remembrance reception, I mean, I know Terry and Chris, Carla, you must have had those councillor badges in the past. I can't remember how long ago that was, but again, if you're coming to remembrance, it's nice to have that, because when you take your robes off, you could be anyone really to some people, because we have visitors that come. No, well, maybe it's a few more years, like, like, like yesterday.
I was trying to follow and then I'm, no.
As much as twenty four hours.
I did have, is, is, at some point in time, we had a little card with our picture in it.
Nice formal badge.
But a badge, I never got one, no, I had, I had no idea what this was.
All right, well, we, you know, I think it'd be nice if you, if you had something like that as councillors.
Well, yeah, when we go somewhere as councillors, it makes sense to be identified.
To walk.
People talking to us in non-age capacity, so.
They had them when we went to Huntingdon for the, in Bloom stuff.
They did.
Terry and I looked at what it is, because we didn't have a badge.
Yeah, and if, if you're, because people don't know how to dress, if I don't. Yeah, it makes sense, I suppose.
You've got those badges, Kerry packed some.
She did, yes.
But I think they've all gone, because mine disappeared and I don't, I did not.
But, you know, when you walk through the door during the day or something like that, then just with staff. I mean, you know, Tuesday we have blood donors in and it's the admin base as well. So there's lots of staff members and when they come downstairs even to go to the toilet, you know, you, you just, if you're in to donate blood, you're not careful, they whip you in.
There's just something else I was going to mention for markets. Um, now that Stacey's settled in a bit, um, I think it'd be great if we could start developing a sort of, um, a promotional pack for would be market traders. So I've been, you know, as I do this time of year, some, uh, like that, going to lots of Christmas markets and stuff like that. And I've, I've spoken to a few traders about, oh, you know, you should come to Thetford, where you're from, blah, blah, blah. There's a guy that lives in Retton that sells, um, cards, homemade Christmas cards, birthday cards, that sort of thing. And he was all the way at, um, uh, Ginswood H at the North Norfolk Hills. Big study home. Holcombe, Holcombe Hall. He was there at the Christmas fair, but it was just outside Thetford. And I thought, well, every so often, why don't you come to, to Thetford? So we had a little pack that we, as councillors or staff, could say, oh, welcome to Thetford Market, these are the rates, these are the days, I just want that to make us, we can then help Stacey and watch us here.
I know one of the things, uh, I know, uh, the mayor was at, um, the NEC in Birmingham last week with, um, Dad's Army, uh, Jones's van, and he did take some information up there. And I think part of his, his role was to try and encourage car rallies to come to that marketplace, uh, next, next year. So, you know, it does work, you know.
I, I use this, um, as an example, one of the most useful things I've, uh, I've sort of added to my armoury, if you like, as a councillor, is getting some, um, business cards printed up for myself. And, and you dish them out and people come back to you. And I think this is an extension of that really, isn't it? And could only be good, you know, the more we, the more we shout about how great we are and, um, the better frankly. And, and this is very much part of the, very much part of the promotion. Um, there was something else I was going to say and I've forgotten that.
There's some people I've sent them to.
Order, order. Four, five, zero Carnegie Remark, Rear Market Place Access Steps. I had a little look at that yesterday, actually.
Okay. So, um, even though this, this doesn't technically, again, it's one of those anomalies, doesn't technically come under this, um, committee, strangely. Terry wanted this added to the agenda, because there has been Facebook chatter in terms of what, what we're doing and things like that. So, um, there has been some issues in terms of whether we needed planning or not. That was one of the reasons why the entrance gates to the market square was held up. But we got to, uh, the bottom of it in the end and, and the gates were actually installed. But this unfortunately fell at a time where the contractor, uh, couldn't do it at that time. But as you can see, he started, as you would have seen, it's a further on than the picture on the slide shows. So he's getting there. So hopefully, um, in the not too distant future, as long as the weather holds off a bit more, it should be finished within a week or two weeks tops, I think. So what he's done is he's taken all the walls down, because, you know, I know one of the Facebook chapters was, you know, the fuss about three bricks that's missing, it's not, the, the wall's been there for so long, the bricks have blown. And it was always either going to fall down or be easily kicked down. So they've taken, they're going to take the walls down and the, uh, the metal railings that you see all the way around the Carnegie. So it will be in keeping with those railings, will come down, um, the steps on both sides and going into the wall that comes out of Ruddlings. So it will look neat and tidy and it'll be a damn sight harder to, um, to, to destroy or damage in the future, hopefully. But, um, yeah, so it's underway and, yeah, it will be.
I think it's, I think it's worth, when it's done, um, putting something out into the public domain about what a great job they've done and how it was instigated before all the fuss on Facebook.
Yeah, the, the, the other part of that was the, uh, the comments about WeatherSpoons, uh, you know, claiming an extra park. The actual waste bins at the back of the shambles is part of their least footprint. We asked to actually extend it, well, we didn't ask, we said we were going to pull it across to try and create a barrier from both sides. And actually, you were there, Terry, when Katie came in, the manager from WeatherSpoons, and said they've had a bit of antisocial behaviour in the back. So what they're actually going to do, once all of this is done, further back, which is their footprint, they're actually going to reply for planning permission to put in a, a proper, a proper fence and gate. So it will be secure for them, but actually it will tidy up that area even more. So, so that's quite a, a good move, to be honest. But it will be further back than where the, where the, um, the barriers are now for obvious reasons.
Is there an opportunity, David, to do something in partnership with them to incorporate our bins?
Well, actually, one of the things that we, our bins, the reason our bins are there, Terry, is because, again, it's a positive, we're finally bottomed out swapping our, uh, waste contractor. The waste can, the, the new contract starts on the 30th of November, which is a bit of a, an issue, because that's when the Christmas markets and all that start. So we're, we're not just going to have those bins, we're going to have event bins in as well. But our bins are usually in the compound, but we've got our current contractor's bins in there, we just haven't got the space. So by the end of the month, um, those bins will be in our compound. Uh, and that will be nice and tidy again, because it's looking a mess round there, not just because of the steps, because the bins have been there.
Yeah.
But they will be in the compound. One thing that our shambles tenants all struggle with is where do they put bins if they want them? Now, we can only accommodate so many. I know when one of these shambles tenants was in, in there before, he asked us if he got a bin and paid for it, could he, could he put it into our compound? If we've got space, we're not going to say no, because we want to keep that area tidy. But what we could do is support WeatherSpoons in terms of making that more secure, but just tell them that we want at least four bins potentially maximum, when our shambles units are fully tenanted, to keep that nice and clean and tidy. So I think that's a conversation that I can help with, or we can help with, um, WeatherSpoons going forward. Because I know pudding, for instance, they, they need a bin, so where do they put it? They're more likely to put it in between the shambles and the guildhall and that's another place to have it.
Appreciate this, a bit of working, but is there any chance that completed that before the personal site switch on?
The plan is, as long as we don't get, you know, storm, whatever the next one is, um, that will be completely before the switch off.
Brilliant.
So we can clear all those bins and everything.
I'll be clear.
Brilliant. Thank you. Any further comments? Four, five, one is the financial update.
Yeah, so our financial, um, report to the end of October is a bit of a tough read. In terms of, uh, our income areas, we are struggling in some of the big hitters in terms of bar fees and Carnegie hire. It is until the end of October, I did look at, um, some of the figures. We've had a bit of positivity over the last few weeks. Some of the bar events that we've, um, we, we have had have, um, have been sort of moving back to, uh, the kind of, grossing in, income or gross take that we've, we've had in the past, when things have been better, climbs. And over the last, uh, last month, I think you're looking at the, uh, the gross income for bar fees on there. The last month is £4,838 gross take, just in the last month. So I think if that actually is a reflection of improving times, then hopefully we'll be able to claw back, uh, some of the shortfall on that. The Carnegie, uh, and Guildhall hire. Yeah, we are, we are down on that slightly, but I must admit, we now are starting to improve on some of the, uh, some of the hires coming back. We can grab back the council chamber, so we can actually get more people into the council chamber. We have a couple of groups that actually, uh, hire that, um, two or three times a week in terms of each hire. So again, hopefully by the end of the year, uh, we'll have clawed back some of that shortfall as well. But we are finding it tough at the moment, I must admit. Tea room, it's, if we can get back into the main tea room, we won't operate, as we've already agreed, a traditional tea room. But we've got a lot of events that we can put on and the idea is then to service those events on the basis that every event that we develop, we always look to see whether we can provide a food and drink beverage to support that. And there are a lot of events going forward that we can do that. Is it all dependent on the tea room? No, it's not. So that's, that's not, um, totally dependent on getting those internal scaffolding down. Because a lot of it can happen in the, in the large court and the council chamber. We've got a medieval banquet that we're, we're developing for February. So there's events like that, that, that doesn't necessarily need the tea room. But there are events that we actually host and deliver in the tea room space, or what was the tea room space, that is literally only can happen in that room. So some of our mock trials and things like that, we have to have it in there, because the biggest feature of that kind of event is the judge's chair. So we can't actually leave that anywhere else. The other thing is, uh, we have to be more proactive, um, in terms of bar events. If we're not getting those kind of hires, we need to seriously look at developing some of the events ourselves and taking a punt in terms of doing it. So, um, and again, we're looking for, we're, we're looking, um, to do that. We've, we've delivered a few, um, Halloween children's discos and things like that. So we decided that was so successful, um, that we decided to do one for Christmas. We've already sold out. We might even look to do another one, because we're getting so many phone calls about it. So again, Um, so again, what we will be doing is every couple of months, we'll be doing a themed uh, children's disco in the Carnegie with a hundred, hundred and fifty kids in there. Um, so that will generate it. The good thing about parents is if the kids are in the main room enjoying itself, they're in the bar having a drink. And actually, uh, one of the bar intakes on the Halloween disco, kids disco was pretty good. And I thought, blimey, that's great. They said, well, the parents were in there drinking, so that's, so that's great. So we killed two boats with one stone. So, um, again, I think you will see the market fees are slightly down, um, but that's because we reduced the income. But the idea is hopefully that creates positivity that will attract more, um, traders. So again, by the end of the year, hopefully that will balance out. Any questions?
Yeah. About scaffolding, probably. At least, so.
Okay.
I'll give you a, a quick update on scaffolding if you really want.
Well, I mean, do know there is a particular interest to find, I think. Obviously, of ways, it's still on.
It's still on.
I believe you've now been, what, three weeks with anything I've given a week for, so.
So we, so the update is, and Nick, to be fair, Nick is the, has been a real driver in that, to be honest. He's now pulling together. We've, we've turned around and said, we just, we cannot operate like this. I can't operate like this. However, we have to understand the safety aspects and I can't, and I can't get a decent answer to my concerns until today. And today, it was revealed that the scaffold internally is not to stop the potential of the clock tower falling through. The scaffold is to hold up the scaffold platform on the roof. Now that is absolutely ludicrous because because if it's not there to, to protect the, the tower falling through, then we have finished with the, with the, with the platform, because all the assessments, all the reports have been done. Everybody and his dog knows what's got to be done to it. We need now to develop a funding bid to, uh, get the funds to make the repairs, which we all know could take several months.
Yeah.
We can't leave the scaffolding up. I had a meeting with the scaffolder today. The scaffolder's absolutely prepared to come back and say that. The structural engineer apparently is too busy until the new year, so he can't come back and do a redraft of the plans. But we are engaging another structural engineer, the conservation architect and, um, the representative from English Heritage. And they will be coming into a meeting very soon. When I say very soon, it's likely to be within a fortnight. That's the problem. So we've got to go another fortnight.
Yeah.
Um, but they, but the positive part of that is the conservation architect has actually stated in his email that he knows how imperative it is to take out the internal scaffolding. He doesn't believe, having viewed the joists and bracing within the, uh, roof, that that's going to compromise any safety inside. So the externals is only there to brace up the scaffold platform.
Yeah.
We don't need that now. We don't need the external scaffold. It might be, and I keep being told I'm being too simplistic, but when I ask those questions, people are now actually saying, that's right. So I think we may be seeing a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel and it could come down. Soon as the internals are, are out, we go back to full operational mode in terms of the guildhall. And as a councillor, you save some money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's one of those things happening.
Yes, um, so I hope we're, we're, we're seeing a bit more positivity.
So just on the practicality side of it, it's essentially, we need to wait now for some.
We need to wait, they, scaffolders will not do anything until they have someone to sign off.
So we need that sign off to say it's.
And hopefully that sign off will come when we have this meeting in, I think it's in the next fortnight. But I must admit, um, Nick is flying off emails at the moment and, and he, he is getting the right answers back, to be honest.
And just on very practical, I remember, I think the last time we discussed this, we were talking about the necessity, maybe call an emergency meeting to enact something to get it down quickly if necessary. Is there anything you need from a council perspective?
So, um, so, uh, councillor Blackburn, David, came in the other day because he's just keen to see it down as well. And I did say to him, he, he understands, you know, the, what we're going through at the moment and he knows that we're, and I did say to him, do you want to be at that meeting? He said, no, but any, you know, the coun, any councillor can be there. So I think in a practical sense, do you need any, is that any of? No, no, because the.
Yeah, authorization you can act on it.
As soon as we get that sign off, the scaffolders can take that down.
Cool.
Uh, so the good thing is someone with professional expertise, i.e. the conservation architect, is using the language that implies that that's, he's going to support that. And that's all the scaffolders need.
Cool.
So, thanks.
Great. Um, just to ask you, who, who is it that is, has to give the sign off for it to come down? The structural engineer?
So the structural engineer has to give the sign off as well as the conservation architect.
Okay.
And we have a new structural engineer who's been serviced with the reports. He'll be coming out to do the inspection. The conservation architect has put him up, uh, filled him with all the information and also, uh, with his qualified view that actually he believes it's man enough to remove the internals.
Not your fault. I'm going to say it anyway. Obviously very disappointed that the council hasn't gotten that sign off for when the initial fifteen weeks period were effectively wasting public money.
Yeah.
The councils, um, you know, we should have put all of that in readiness because nothing's changed in terms of week one, as to week eighteen, I assume.
Right now, it's three weeks after. I have to agree, Terry, and, and, and David was of that, you know, mind as well on, on Monday when he came in. And, uh, but, you know, these guys, if you, if you're trying to broker a meeting, you know, Jason, the structural engineer, knows how important it is. He knows the implications that if this went on, what it would mean to my team. Um, and he's too busy to come until the new year. Well, that's not acceptable. So we've, we've looked at other structural engineers that can actually make this decision.
Yeah, they're, they're not picking up the bill.
No.
My view would be that we call their bluff and take it down. Um, what's the lead time for the scaffolding company? So within days, within weeks, you know, how long notice do we have to say, right, we've got this piece of paper that's going to?
I talked to the scaffolders today and as soon as they get the sign off, they can, they can come in and take it down. It's a big build. Um, so it's probably going to take a good week for it to come down physically. Um, I would, I would obviously make him take the internals down first because that means we can at least operate. Um, because we were still operating when they were erecting the external, so we can just call them that all. But yeah.
Okay.
I mean, again, the reason it's taken so long is now taking us into the bad weather months. So again, you know, they're not going to get up and take that down in, in a storm or a thing, but, um, the conversation I had with the scaffolders today is, as long as they get the, um, official approval and sign off, they'll take it down.
Do we have enough information to inform the next steps, which I'm assuming will be a funding bid to somebody saying this is what we need done, you know, do we have enough to tender to get an idea of what it would cost to do the work?
And, and that's why, that's why, uh, the conservation architect and, um, the representative of English Heritage are coming into that meeting as well. Not just also to lend their weight to the decision that we don't need the scaffolding, but also to make sure that the conservation architect can write a specification brief that fits in with the English heritage.
So we, as a result of the scaffolding going up, we'll end up with a specification that we can then put out tender.
Yeah.
And get a ballpark figure for how much it would cost.
Yeah.
And that can be used to inform a funding bid.
Yeah.
Okay. Don't mind spending fifty K on a piece of scaffolding, as long as we've got a trajectory to the issue being resolved, because at the moment, we've spent fifty grand on scaffolding and we haven't actually achieved anything.
Well, well, that, that's not quite right. We've, we've, we've spent, well, if it's not, if the scaffolding wasn't to support the clock tower, I can't fathom out why it's so extensive. We are paying for a huge extensive scaffolding system where to me it could have been half the size if we took out all, so therefore it would have been half the cost. But we did need to erect a scaffold for the guys to get up there to do the assessment.
Yeah.
And that's what it was put up for, not to hold anything up.
Yeah.
To get physically to get up there and do.
Presumably it's quite robust because there was always a chance that the tower might have to come down. Therefore, and you know, it wasn't just to facilitate people coming up, potentially it was to facilitate the tower coming off as well. I don't know, um.
No, because if, because one of the views in the early days was, were, were, was we going to crane it off and take it away? I mean, to be honest, um, the conservation architect is not advocating that, partly because he feels, feels the repairs are, um, able to be, you know, repaired in situ. But actually, that's not going to help us as a council in terms of finance, because you can't take someone, store it for up to nine, twelve, eighteen months. If it's going to take us that long to get the bid, it's going to cost. And so it's going to cost putting the scaffolding up or taking it away. So the idea is to leave it in situ. We might have to have something that might be able to protect it and weatherproof it. But, um, but we, we will take the scaffold down, so we negate the cost. Um, yeah, so we've done everything now. So he's got all the information that can put forward the specifications so we can get, so hopefully we can get the money to do the, to, to do the job.
Scaffolding down, subject to sign off.
Yeah.
Two to three weeks.
Hopefully.
From that specification, put out tender and then the council can decide next steps.
Yeah.
Whether we wish to fund it ourselves or apply for grant funding.
Yeah. And the good thing is part of that discussion at, at that meeting will be the, we're the potential funders. So they will be talking about us, talking to us about the criteria of, are we able to? They are very keen, they are very keen to help us repair that because of the importance of, of the building, but.
And presumably an indication of timeline from them, because if they say it's two years, it is, you know, six months straight, but you know, the longer we leave it, the more it's going to score.
Well, that's, that's why, um, part of the discussion also is, yes, you're going to have to take down ninety-five percent of that scaffolding, but are we going to leave up a little bit of it that we can help weatherproof it? That's one of the conversations, because if you were to see some of the pictures of some of the, of the, the plinths, I mean, they are in a serious state of, um, you know, deterioration. If, if it was going to be next September, before we get funding bids through, decisions made, um, you know, who knows what stage it's in. At the moment, the assessment reports have come back and, and said, it's not, it's bad, but it's not as bad as what was originally thought.
They're not telling us to take it off. No, they're not telling us to keep the scaffolding up.
No.
Come on.
I've been following up. I'm just confused about a few points. I think the whole, the whole progress of the timeline, how things and decisions were taken, it to me is becoming a bit confusing. So if you could just clarify a few points. So the conservation officer thinks it's not necessary to pick the whole tower, even for us, it would cost a lot of storage, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So what's this, what's this opinion or this, or this, um, whatever assessment made by the conservation officer, prior or after this scaffolding went up? I, I, I'm just confused about the timeline and how things.
It was after, because we have to get up there to access it, to assess it, to form that opinion.
To get up there, all we needed was enough scaffolding for people to get up there to do the assessment, which was a minor scaffolding, like you mentioned before, right? A, a minor set of scaffolding.
Well, I, I actually have the same view as you, but.
I, I'm just trying to understand.
But then you will be, you'll be called simplistic like I was. But so I, I can't, I can't.
I, I don't have a problem with people calling simplistic, as long as things are clear.
Well, uh, to me, it's not clear.
Can I, can I join this little gang?
Um, so, okay, so should we not ask for an assessment to be done first? To definitely have an idea whether or not that tower is going to come down before we invest it? And then answer the cost of keeping the scaffolding up, investing in such an expensive scaffold, in such a structure? I, I'm just wondering if they shouldn't, they shouldn't have considered this before.
Well.
It's a decision that opinion should never come before the scaffolding went up. In retrospect.
It's a bit of a, yeah, it's a bit of a chicken and egg thing, that one, because it, it, you know, he, he determined the scale of the scaffolding that was needed to, to, for people to get up there and do the assessment. Honestly, there's internal scaffolding that goes through three floors underneath the clock tower, through the T room and into the basement. It's, it's, it's unbelievable. If you get into the, what used to be the old art gallery in the, in the up, just physically under the bell tower, you cannot freely walk around that room. It, the scaffolding covers the whole space. And then that wasn't to keep the tower up.
Okay. Okay, I think, I think it's just, I think it gets very confusing. It's a misunderstanding of what scaffolding purpose was and what needed to be done on step by step when it comes to assess and repair the place itself.
If, so.
It's confusing.
So for us, and, and with respect, councillors, we aren't professionals.
No.
We have to take advice from professionals and this, and the structural engineer, um, has signed off that plan in terms of that's what we need. Get people up there.
Okay, okay.
To be brought on up, did, did we, we did contact other structural?
We did, yeah, we did. And some, some of them came out. One of them actually, uh, would have been closing down the Carnegie if one of them had his way. Because the bracing bars would have gone straight across the driveway, rublins wouldn't have been able to get into their rear car park. We wouldn't have been, honestly, it's, it's amazing.
Just.
That's fine, not caring.
Back to the meeting that you talked about, um, when is it, the, the meeting with English?
So, so Nick is, Nick is, um, I mean, honestly, his emails flying around all over. So, um, I think what he's trying to do is broker the meeting within a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Um, as I said to David, it's, you know, these guys, she, you know, she's one of the executives in, in English Heritage. The, you know, you open up a diary and, and like the structural engineer is now saying, I can't come until the new year. Well, that's no good to us.
It's one, it's one of our rewards.
He's trying to broker that meeting as soon as he can.
When they want it, anyway, you can say this. Um, I'd just say if you can let me know, I, I can't, I'll try to go.
Yeah.
I think that's worth an all rounder email, isn't it?
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm sure you're not alone in terms of councillors.
Yeah.
Who might wish to attempt.
So sorry.
It's just, just quickly, going forward then, now we definitely know that it's okay to bring down, that there's some scaffolding and that this thing is going to hold until we put on the bidding, go through the whole process of getting the funding and us to actually go in and repair it. Is that correct?
That's what I'm being told.
Got to make that clear. We can hold with the two years plus we've been required to get this job done.
Yeah. Being told.
And I said.
The most frustrating thing for me is we have spent several months, it's affected my budget, our budget, on the back of, to me, the internals were never needed. And that is the most frustrating thing.
Yeah, okay.
If it's only consolation, I'm sharing frustration.
I think we all.
Yeah. There we are. Do we have anything further on the financial report?
No.
Any further questions on the financial report?
Um, you've mentioned, um, uh, we'd have been contract, David. Could you just give us an update? You mentioned, I think that's been agreed and.
So, um, so we're now swapping for our current contractor to Breton Way Services. Um, they actually, if you remember, um, helped us out through the seaside special. And actually councillors reported back, I remember at this committee meeting, saying how much we improved that from the Witsen, um, continental market. And I must admit, that was very much, um, as a result of a really good working partnership with, uh, with Duncan and, and Breton Way Services. So uh, I, I've always been really keen to try and dip to, to, to make sure that we, uh, we change our contract to them. And Alan's done all the financials. Not only does it reduce significantly, uh, our costs in terms of waste services and and you know that other committees also have, uh, you know, expenditure around waste. Uh, and so it's, it's great from that point of view, but honestly, um, I have a really good working relationship with Duncan and we've got a continental market that's it with us for four days from the thirtieth of November. And, um, and, you know, it's one of those things that you've got a face-to-face contact with him, you know, you can just pick up the phone and say, look, we're planning a big weekend. Um, how can you support us with, with some, with some additional? And because. And because he also has an in with the Serco contract, he can put them on, on, uh, on. Guard in terms of making sure that they also do the additional litter pips and things like that. And that, that was the reason why the seaside special worked so well from that aspect. So I'm really pleased, um. And yeah, you know, so.
The new contract, are there any sort of quantifiable benefits around sort of recycling and that sort of thing?
So we, so again, I think one of the actions in a previous, so can we separate out the glass bottles and things? We will have a separate, um, bin specifically for that. So we will be, um, developing and improving our recycling credentials. Uh, we also, um, the market traders will be, a lot of fruit and veg, uh, waste is cardboard. You know, so again, we will have a recycling bin that they will, they will put into, uh, into specific bins. Um, and, and also not all of the cost, but some of the cost. That is attributed to the waste generated from the market, whereas lots of markets are withdrawing their waste services. Uh, the conversation I had with the traders were that we've got two choices. We could either re- retract our, our waste services commitment to the market. You'll have to take it away or you make a commitment. And, uh, the two main users of our waste services for the market have willingly provided a, a, a financial commitment to that as well. So that will reduce it even further, uh, in terms of our costs. So that's good.
And we work with Duncan to get a press release out talking about carbon reduction.
So one of the things he's talking about, he's, he's, he's obviously got a commitment to try and talk to all the town councils. And Duncan's view was, this is the biggest contract that he's won. And he's very keen to make sure that we publicize the partnership and we definitely will be doing so when they deliver the bins on the thirtieth, you know. Councillors can come down and, you know, we can.
In the bin?
Yeah.
That joke's been and gone. Um. As it happens, I bumped into Duncan Saturday morning. He is very confident that by providing a, what you might call bespoke service for us. He can reduce costs and give us a better service. And I, I suspect he's probably right.
Yeah. And also if we have, you know, if we have an event, especially like a continental market over four days. You know, I mean, it was, it's been well received and been, you know, well attended over the last year, but if there was such an influx of people. It's, it's a relationship where we can say, look, we just need a couple of extra pins and he would get them here for us, not a problem. Oh, I think it's a really good relationship with our current previous contractor. We just didn't have that kind of relationship.
I think it's possible that we have a contract that is flexible to adjust. All of a sudden we put down something extra or add on to an event and then they can, they can adjust. So this to that, so, so it's good. They're definitely capable of doing it.
Any further comments on the financial update? Good, um, four, five, two, approval of draft, draft budget twenty, twenty four, twenty five.
So in terms of the draft budget, um, I've had a conversation with, uh, Alan to finance, um, the town far. And he was away on holiday last week, so I've not had too much time to have a squint at this. But, um. We are not as a committee under pressure to, uh, um, recommend this to finance and personnel. Our job today, I think, will be, if we make some observations. That we might want finance and personnel, because our next meeting will be in January, which will be too late. Um, but I think our observations today are, um. We just need a few tweaks, if that's what you want to do, in terms of some of the areas. Uh, for them to understand that when they look to approve the, the, the council budget in its entirety. The one thing that I've looked at is, um, because we are devolving down a lot of the health and safety, and if you look at the current budget. One of the areas that have absolutely, uh, outspent is maintenance and repairs. So in the past, we've had, you know, a nominal two and a half, three thousand pounds, I think. And we've spent something like nine thousand odd. Now in his draft budget for next year. He's put in, um, something like three and a half thousand pounds, I think. That's, and actually, if you look at it, it's nine thousand nine hundred this year. If that's just not going to be enough if you devolve it down to the, uh, to the committees. Um, but what you've got to understand, that must have sat somewhere in another budget, so. In terms of across the piece, the town council, it shouldn't really be any increase. It's just taking some expenditure from one. And put it in to be accountable within this budget. So I think we need to look at that. Um. And also, um. If you look at five, two, four, zero, uh, newsletters and publications, there is nothing against that. Well, we've just talked about, um, biannual newsletters that we are really pleased with and. Something that we want to pursue. So I think we need to, you know, put money in there. But that also says news and publications. So what about these promotional packs? I mean, to be honest, they're not a great expense, to be honest. You can print several thousand leaflets and things like that for. Sixty, seventy quid, eighty quid, but the newsletter is an expense. So we can't have nothing there.
And I was just going to comment on about that. I'm a little bit confused just at first glance on why, um. But it proposed budget's expenditure is quite so low compared to the revised budget from last year. I don't know, there's some that's separately, but like, looking at revised budget of overall expenditure sixty two thousand and it's close one of forty four, just as.
So I, so I think if you look at, if you look at, um, the income above, he's, he's reduced it, not, not at that scale.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, um, aligned to the income, the expenditure that's gone down, he's forecast that to be reduced. So obviously the expenditure will go down as well, but what he's done is he's taken out things like, um. I, I think three, there was, we, we've had three and a half, five thousand pounds in, in, uh, advertising, um, before. And there's nothing in there. So I think what he's trying to do is strip out some of it. I presume, I haven't had the chance to talk to him too much about it, but I did say to him, the problem with this is. We can't make a decision tonight. We can just make.
Yeah.
Remarks for finance and personnel to pick up on.
I guess, um, these, that's just sort of my approach in my case. Yes, there is less on the, for example, of our budget.
Um, yeah.
Like that, but at the same time, that's nowhere near the difference.
So the only thing I would, the only thing I would say on, on, on those kind of income. It, it's not as important if you, if you, I mean, I'm not. Oh, sorry about the expense. Well, it, it, it's in, it's in relation to that, yeah. But, but the thing with the income is, if you, if you, uh, if you downsize the forecast income. The pressure you guys should put, I'll be is to beat it.
Yeah.
You know, so that, but what we don't want to do is overforecast it and don't achieve.
That was going to be my overarching content, which, um, is just, I was sort of looking for a kind of complex hire and we've talked about, I think every. Every time the political committee has been, oh, yeah, we're, we're struggling a little bit. I'd rather say more to the target that you beat.
You, you, you can, you can do that, um, Doug, but what I would say is, what we've done as a team is we've re. So there's two ways to look at it. We can either just say, and, and actually, you're right, we're, we're seven months in. But we've got to a point where we've said, listen, we can't, we can't just sit here. And be reactionary against, you know, something that's, that's taken a bit of a, a backseat. What we need to do. Is to take a calculated risk and start delivering some of our own stuff. We need to be more proactive. So where we see the gaps. We can have these off the shelf type party nights and things like that, which are quite easy and cost effective to do and could be, could bring in. Um, quite a bit of income. So, so the Carnegie hire, I'm not as worried about. The bar, I think we are. I think he was right to try and downgrade that slightly. The biggest concern for me is things that are purely expenditure. And if you don't put anything in there, well, if you don't put anything in against newsletters, we've just had a meaningless conversation, to be honest.
I mean, the, the idea with newsletters and comms more generally is that they generate their own revenue.
It's part of our promotional.
Yeah, and, and you have to have a budget for that, don't you?
Yeah.
I, I get that, I agree. I, just on the telephone on that sort of, the income side of that, and I'm not necessarily a fixated, but. Um, you're right, and it's great you've been proactive and I thought, you know, okay, well, we're not meeting it, let's go and do these things. I guess my question would be, um, if it was a lower target, would you therefore go, ah, we've met the target, so it's fine? Or would you?
Well, we're proactive.
Because if, if something large, if we're just at a feeding backstage, I've just got the sense that I'd rather having the conversation of how can we get better? Rather than how are we going to make up the shortfall?
So. So my, my, my answer to you then. Don't, don't put that target on this, because if we don't hit it, you're going to calculate a preset from this information.
Yeah.
And if we, we over egg it, we're not going to hit it. Committee should be doing, and this is, you know. This is the manager trying to tell you, you need to be challenging us. So you need to be saying unofficially, non-budget wise. You know, I want to see X amount generated. But don't physically put it on here because you're going to commit it to a calculation which is going to result in the preset. What you need to do is to be setting other, uh, uh, KPIs, if you like.
Yeah.
Um, against what we should be achieving, what we really should be striving for. Um, and I'm not afraid of that. That's good, because what it does mean is everyone in my team needs to have a proactive type attitude rather than. I mean, in my, in my, in my committee report, I did, I did make a comment in there about the tea.
Hmm.
And actually, some of the comments about the T room income generation was a little bit unfair. Because actually, if you looked at the budget, I mean, the budget now, and she's gone and this, it's just dried up because we've not opened it. But there were times when she was hitting budget. And you have to argue, if you seriously didn't think the budget reflected what we should be generating. Then there should be another target, because actually she could have turned around and said what you're saying. I can sit back and say, I'm hitting budget. So I, but we have, council budgets are very peculiar, Doug, because you have to, you have to calculate a preset.
Yeah.
And if you, if you forecast something to calculate a preset and we don't deliver. It's got to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
Whereas if you under forecast but overachieve. Then that's good, because you've set a preset on a realistic forecast, but the challenge is for us to overachieve. And how do you do that? Challenges.
Uh, that's, yeah, so, like, and that's what I think my.
So I can tell you though, the, the, the talk is that we look at these and we say we have a problem. What, you know, we're looking at, we're looking at the bar operation at the moment. How do we drive people? So I've had people in this week that I've walked from the front door. And said, if you were coming in here and you've never been in here before, where's the bar? I don't know, because if you stand at the front door, you can't see the bar. So you don't know where the bar is. So if you just sort of, oh, actually, I want to go down to that event, that looked quite interesting. You can go in and then, uh, the auditorium's there. You don't even know you've got a bar. So the whole signage aspect has got to be, we've got to drive people in there. We've got to actually entice people to buy a drink. Can they buy a drink? So we're looking at, you know, we're trying to talk to our hirers. When they say to us, and Abermania was something that was a bit of a negative chatter on there, but. They were a third party hire, so we need to have more proactive conversations with them. You know, we know our venues. I know you want maximum capacity, but we also need to make it a really pleasant night, so people buy a drink and want to come back. So the legends of Motown is coming in March. That will be cabaret style, because they came last year and we, we asked them to put some tables out and they had a better night. They don't usually deliver their show like that, but they're coming back to Thetford because they had a fantastic night. And we will have a cabaret style event which will generate a good bar income, because people can physically buy a drink. Stick it on a table, watch your show, get up and dance, whatever. And we are going to be more proactive in the way we talk to our hirers in the future. There's going to be some difficult conversations and I'm going to have one next week with a particular hire that's been coming to the Carnegie for fifteen years. And then we're going to be talking about delivering their event in a slightly different way. That's not going to go down too well, but I'm sure we'll come to an agreement. Uh, but we need to be like that really. Because we can't be dictated to. And suffer the consequences of not generating bar income and also picking up negative comments when it's not our event. So I think I've got a new staff member that's very good at that. She's brilliant. She's having the conversations already. She's only been with us four weeks and. And she's, she's manipulating those, um, hirers in a really good way that will make sure their event is successful. So I think that's what we need to do. We need to be looking at that kind of thing rather than. Overegging this really. The only thing I'm worried about is some of those is purely expenditure things, because. Part of that success strategy is to promote what we do really well. We've just talked about the newsletter being one of them. That's part of our arsenal now and. We haven't got any money in this budget to do that.
Paula.
Well, following on one of Doug's good points, um, yeah, obviously we have to have newsletter costs in here that reflect the actual newsletter, otherwise we can't produce it. Uh, I just want some clarification that on the containment licensing point, he only expenses. Because it went from five twenty, then it was six thousand five hundred and something, and we have a budget of two, two K for the phone two years. Can you tell me just broadly what, because it was a spike and then kind of goes on to two thousand. What entails?
Yeah.
What, what entails, what is included on that?
Yeah, pretty good question. So, um, so this committee, um, several months ago now, we changed the terms of condition of hire. So if, if, if a band came in. I mean, Abermania is a really good example because it was a high value ticket. So PRS is calculated on a percentage of the total ticket sales.
Okay.
Now, if you're selling a hundred and seventy one tickets, which they did at twenty six, twenty six quid. That's quite, you know, a gross income and we, the PRS will claim two percent of that. Now. Unless you have a upfront, uh, scaling system, which we have now, we pay that.
Yeah.
And that's why it's been so high in the past. So what we do now is. How much is your tickets? What is your target audience? Look at the terms and conditions. So if you manage to sell a hundred and fifty tickets at that price. This is what you're going to have to pay as your PRS contribution. So we turn that on to them and that's why we've been able to lower this cost. Uh, so that's been a real positive for us, because over the years, we've saved something like four thousand pounds on that. And actually going forward, if we're going to, if we're going to put more events on like that. Our, our commitment to PRS is going to be even greater. So therefore our expense, if we don't operate that kind of system. Luckily, the committee approved that and we.
We are transferring the PRS liability rate to the, to the, to the event holder, we think.
Yeah.
Okay. With all the events then, or some of them?
All the, the events that, um, require a PRS payment. Not all of them. If it's a wedding, for instance, that's exempt. If it's a private party, that's.
Just the ones that the contribution is to be made.
The ones that are purely, um, ticketed shows and.
Problem making.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
But.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, we've done one newsletter now.
Yeah.
So we've got a good understanding of what the cost is.
Yeah.
So what's the cost for two?
So we need an annual cost of three and a half thousand pounds. Um. And we've had that in the budget before. We've had, I, I know we've had a budget of up to about seven thousand pounds at one point. But it's been one of those ones where as we've had to make a little bit of saving, it's almost been. But what we, what we have to be realistic about is we're, we're down to nothing now. And, and it's really important that we have a marketing strategy.
Yeah.
I, I think it's one of those ones that's. Well, well, it is a no brainer. Um, I think historically, it's an easy one to cut, because you haven't got a defined profit from it. I don't think that's a good reason to cut it, frankly.
And actually, we, we've, we've not, we've not had a strategy of what that, what that marketing campaign or strategy is. We've just put a sum of money in there and we'll, we'll generate a few posts. We've actually got a media policy which is very specific now. We have to do this, this and this. So we can track why we're spending this money and how we're spending it and what we're getting back from it. So I think that's a completely different ballgame now.
The budget line for the box office website and digital media, there's nothing next. Is that because it's been rolled into our?
It's been rolled in, it's been rolled into the website cost, yeah. It's been rolled in, it's been rolled into the website cost, yeah.
And there's another income line for box office income. One of the things I've been quite concerned about is our huge increase in fees, bank fees. For, you know, backs payments, cash payments, that sort of thing. And I'm just amazed how little we get in box office income. You know, you have to wonder, is it even worth doing a box office?
Well, I mean, the thing is, we can't, you know, we can't force people to use our box office. It's so easy now. It's so easy now for even. Small organisations to set up a ticket source account and sell their own tickets. And why wouldn't you really? Because you're not paying someone like us five percent or 10% of, of the ticket price. So it is getting to the point where it's used very, very rarely.
Is that pure income or are there any costs associated with us having a box office?
It only.
Nice and wide, I don't know.
Uh, only, well, it's on transactional stuff. So I mean, if, if it's not being used, then we don't pay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the income predicted from the specialist markets, the guys that come, you know, Christmas and whatnot, they don't pay us to come, do they?
They don't pay us to come.
What's, what's the fifteen hundred income from specialist market?
So it will be things like those additional markets that we put onto the market square. So like the foodie Friday type things.
Pitch fee or something.
Yeah, yeah. Christmas, I mean, we've got the Christmas market, if you like, not the continent market, the one in the Guildhall. With our star traders, it's going to be a great weekend. It's going to be a big footfall. If you're going to come on a Friday, you've got to come Saturday and Sunday. So they're actually, each stall holder is paying for three days. So that's the kind of thing we're trying to promote. And so hopefully we will be able to generate that. One of the other things that. That we haven't got in here, if you look at. Sponsorship, if you, if you go along, I don't know what that twenty one pound was in two thousand and nineteen, I really don't. But there's nothing against that. Again, probably it's a bit of a blessing if we don't put anything in there. But it's something that I think, I mean, we were talking about it the other day, Terry, is something that actually as a committee. We need to put some proper sponsorship packages together, because we're actually doing a lot of stuff now that actually is attractive. In fact. I don't, I don't know where, where it sits at the moment, but, but. We have had a couple of organisations like up and Taylor Wimpy that have sponsored some of our events. And there should be an income line in there that says at least two and a half thousand pounds. But that obviously at the moment sits somewhere else. But I think. So I actually asked Alan if we could put a line in there, but he's obviously putting nothing against it. There you go.
I, I do, I do think in, in relation to that, sorry, I could, I'm about to say, I do think in relation to that, we do need a more structured approach to sponsorship. Including, as you say, the packs, but also a method of accounting in terms of the money we're getting, how we spend it. And because it feels a little bit ad hoc at the moment, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I was just going to reiterate, we, we definitely need to consolidate sponsorship if we have it into this budget. Because otherwise, if it exists, but for all purposes, we can't see it. I mean, it's not contributing to this particular meeting, which we wanted actually. Doing the admin for the venues.
I mean, you know. Council Blackmore, David Blackmore was in the other day and one of the things that he was saying is, you know, he was really enthused about coming into the garden the other day. You know, are we seriously looking at trying to do some band concerts and things like that? And he was saying that actually, you know, we do really need to try and generate more money so we can reinvest them in the extra. And this is something.
Yes.
You know, sponsors will pay for entertainment and things like that. So, or the end of performance. So it's vital that it comes within this budget somewhere, at some.
If, if possible, could you not transfer back into this particular committee? This particular budget. So there's something on those lines rather than an empty space. I mean, if we're getting the money, then it should come into this meeting. That's my opinion.
Do you want any more? Are we done? And so, as you say, we don't. We can't sign this off. We just recommend.
So we just make some of those remarks to take to finance and personnel to address.
Okay, four, five, three, community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required.
We're definitely going to do the one about the waste services transfer. So.
Yes.
So that's, we'll do that on November the thirtieth, when the actual contract gets in.
Good.
If people do something on November the thirtieth and we've got the Christmas event, is it worth, can we tie it in and just mention it?
Yeah.
Perhaps it's a very practical, itty bitty point, it just seems.
Yeah.
If we're talking, if we're launching something on the day, that's the Christmas fair's, the best of markets happening, we might as well tie it.
Yeah.
And committee four, five, four, committee officers update. See the update from the committee officer since the issue of the agenda.
No, there's nothing apart from on the report that I circulated, just the request to change the date of the January meeting. If that was okay with the committee, from the fifteenth of January to the twenty fourth of January, which is a week after. Which still gives us a week to. Enable us to get whatever decisions we make, whatever information we, into the full council pack the following week. We've done that, we've done that before.
That, that feels like a good idea, given the, well, the website and the newsletter, the pressure on set at that point as well.
Have to type the minutes quick that way, Cameron.
Done it.
You've got, oh, you've got finance tonight.
Yeah. I think we'll declare the meeting closed. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.